And I make it all the time, because I love hummus.
Kathy, can they just bring, they can just bring their chairs up here?
Have you ever tasted hers?
If you tried the hummus recipe, you wouldn't really like so much of it either.
Have you tasted hers at all?
No, I have not.
We have to get you to taste it.
Yeah, I would love to. I would love to. Yeah, it's like my favorite.
Hi, how are you?
If they throw the pizza away and give us apples.
I'm gonna try everything.
They come out.
Do you have to go online on the web and hit the Dropbox for it to appear in the Dropbox?
Beautiful, alright.
You have to open everything.
No, but you have to click her link on the web to open that up on the web first?
No, I don't know.
And then it appears in your Dropbox?
Yeah, just hit their link and then it appears in the Dropbox.
No, mine doesn't.
Really?
I have to log in.
Oh, I don't.
On the web.
Weird. Okay. Are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Guess we're all set. Welcome to the North Reading School Committee meeting. We are re-entering open session. We had previously had an executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining and potential litigation. At this time, our first order of business every week is public input. If there's anybody to be heard on any items who's not on the agenda tonight. Okay, seeing nobody. Next, we have our student report, and tonight we have Madison Capazudo. Madison?
Okay, so first on my list here, I have the freshman sophomore winter ball, which is sponsored by the junior class, which is my class. So this Friday, from 6:30 to 7:30, we're doing a semi-formal catered dinner. And then, following the dinner, we're going to be moving the kids into the gym from 7:30 approximately to 9:30 for a dance. The purpose of this dance that we had put together, starting actually quite a few months ago, towards the end of last year, is to get the underclassmen sort of acclimated into high school life. We figured that it was less intimidating for them to sort of be in an environment with the grade either above or below them, depending on which grade they're in. And seeing as the past few dances that we have hosted, open to all four grades, have not been very well attended, we figured that we would try to aim sort of for the lower grades, so that they had something that they could kind of call their own event, where juniors and seniors do have their proms. So while it is not a parallel to a prom, it's sort of similar in that we are inviting students from other towns, if they are in grades nine or 10, as guests. We have decorations coming in from a really great place I was explaining to Mrs. Willis this afternoon, the lunatics of Saugus. They're doing our decorations, our lights. The other officers and I put together centerpieces and desserts. Mrs. McGovern is helping us out with paper goods. So everything has been very cost-effective. We sold tickets all last week for $20 apiece, and we are looking right now at just under 200 students attending. So, moving on from that, winter sports started last Monday. Boys' basketball had a scrimmage yesterday against Wakefield, which unfortunately, they lost. Girls' basketball had a scrimmage today against Weston at home. There's a wrestling scrimmage Wednesday at Winchester at 3:00 PM. A wrestling quad scrimmage Saturday at North Reading. Last Tuesday, North Reading hosted an E-Mark Gym Night. Community service, the total of 12 hours for both juniors and seniors, is due this Friday, along with the written log and a reflection to be graded by each student's history teacher. Ryla applications for juniors were due last Friday to Mr. Bernard to be submitted for submissions, obviously. And let's see, last night, there was a football banquet held at the Hillview, where special awards were given to Carla Pani, John Forts, and Evan Wade. The World of Science Club has an upcoming competition, the exact date, actually couldn't get my hands on, but within the next few days. Model UN, which is Model United Nations, run by Mr. Princeopoulos, recently was not accepted to Harvard due to really long wait lists, but they are intending to reapply in the spring for next year. The Student Council Conference for NEMASK, which is the regional conference, which North Reading is a part of, that's our region, it's the northeastern region, along with Lowell, Tuxbury, Drakeett. That was held at Lowell High School last Wednesday. So students took the trip outside of school. We attended a total of two workshops that day. They had sort of like a construction worker theme for us. They always put sort of a fun, real-life application to each individual workshop, so they had sort of like, you know, fixing the hole in the wall, laying your foundation, that sort of thing. In which students.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, from the new school. Exactly. Good point, Jerry.
In which students were given the opportunity to improve leadership skills, get hands-on experiences with hundreds of other northeastern delegates and advisors, is a chance to communicate ideas, kind of discuss what works and what doesn't. A lot of topics involve storytelling, the importance of communication, fundraisers, service projects, and the fine-tuning of very important leadership skills. Upon their return, we took a debrief into the library, in which we gave students the opportunity to discuss what they liked, what they didn't like, what they learned, what they were able to take away from the experience. And it was very interesting, because it was the freshmen, their first experience with NEMASK, and it was all very positively received. Delegates for the Hyannis Conference were chosen last Thursday, the first payment of which is due this Friday. And that brings me to student work, which, staying on the note of Student Council. I have one of these for each of you, if you want to pass them around. These are, this is an outline that I had used with another Student Council officer, Marissa Milano. She's also a junior. At the time, we were obviously sophomores last year, we presented a workshop at the Hyannis State Conference titled Effective Communication. The first sheet, the front and back, is the outline that we used, that if you go through, it's just a list of the supplies we had used, sort of our goals and objectives, some of the activities that we had presented. We were given a 55-minute timeframe, and during which time, we led students through these activities, kind of gave them certain challenges. As you can see, some of this information obviously was not given to them, otherwise it would give the whole purpose of the activities away. So a lot of it had to do with kind of solving challenges centered on communication. So if you look on the very back of that sheet, the debriefing topics, that is information that they were given. That whole second sheet, the tips for effective communication, that is the sheet that the participants of the workshop were handed, sort of towards the end. That's just a list that we had compiled, sort of our own tips for effective communication, things that we deemed very important. And then, sort of on the back again, you'll find that debriefing topics list, and that was sort of what we had used to guide the students toward more of the reflective, introspective things towards the conclusion of the workshop. So we hope that you'll find it as useful as we did, if anything, you know, maybe you can even pick up a couple of things. We like to think that we did, every now and then we'll pull it out even for our council. And that's why I wanted to bring it tonight, because a week from this Thursday, we will be re-presenting this workshop to our council as a whole in the gym, in place of a regular Student Council meeting, sort of to do some fine-tuning and sort of like council development, sort of on the home front level. So, thank you.
Any questions?
That was a thorough report.
I hope I entertained you. I tend to talk.
Very good.
Effective communication, long communication.
I'm looking at this, and maybe the whole school committee could use this.
I think that every student should understand the importance of effective communication, so this is a really nice outline that gives them a good idea of how to and how not to speak and communicate your messages. And I also saw in here, I think it's really effective to help people understand that sometimes they might have to speak in support of things that they really don't support, but if they're working as part of a group, sometimes you're going to have to support something that isn't something that maybe you individually don't support. And that gets into this also, so this is very good. Effective communications, effective writing. I have a middle management job tomorrow, right out of high school. What do you think?
Senior manager.
Senior manager job.
Oh, boy.
I also want to add, congratulate the football team. They had a great year. That was a very tough game. I stood next to Mr. Venezia, and we suffered the pains of the defeat, as did all the other. There was a lot of North Reading fans there, a lot of North Reading fans. And it was a great day, the weather was unbelievable, and the kids had a great season. It's too bad they couldn't go on. Linfield actually did make it to the Super Bowl, but lost in the Super Bowl.
Bishop Fian.
To Bishop Fian, yeah. And I should mention that Cliff's son-in-law is the head coach of the football team, and Cliff didn't even go to the game.
What?
Yeah, I was preparing.
He was preparing Thanksgiving dinner in Maine.
Thanksgiving dinner.
So he couldn't be there, but the coach and the staff did a great job this year, and we're all proud of their activities.
We're very proud of their activities. Yesterday was the football banquet.
Oh, you attended, right?
And I did attend, and I wanted to say that Coach Wald did an outstanding job recognizing the effort of every single player on that football team. And it was my first banquet, and I really enjoyed all of the camaraderie, the support of the parents. It was very well-attended. A lot of staff were there, of course, the coaches were there, and the boys were very proud of their accomplishments, in spite of what happened on Thanksgiving Day. They're a great group of young men, and I wish them well in the future.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, congratulations to all the fall sports teams, because we had some very good teams, but the football team really, that was an exciting season. They went from 1-9 two years ago to 7-3 last year to 8-2 this year. And they played a very, very tough game on Thanksgiving Day. Linfield's a very big and a very good team, but we gave them everything they could handle, so it was a fun season to watch.
Cliff?
I can say that in my family, it was a very, very long Thanksgiving weekend. And that Coach Wald's comments were, he felt very badly that the best group he's ever had did not succeed, and he felt very badly for them for that.
Any other questions?
It played well, good season.
Thanks, Madison.
Thanks, Madison.
Nicely done.
Okay, we have a number of presentations slash requests tonight, so the first one we're going to get to is the Adventure Club, and we have some student representatives from the Adventure Club, and they'd like to come up and make a request for a trip. So if you can tell us your names and what position you have in the club, and then let us know what you'd like to do.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Anna Martin. I'm Erica Esposito, and we are your Adventure Club chair presidents. We are actually missing another president here tonight.
We're going to do a PowerPoint, free PowerPoint. Get out of the way.
It's by the door, Claudia. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Willis, Finance Secretary Lieutenant, Committee Chair Webster, and Vice Chair Bowers, and the members of the school committee. Thank you for hearing our Adventure Club proposal tonight. Our overnight skiing summer shift is going to happen on Friday, January 11, and we will be leaving right after school at 2:31, and we will hope to be getting back at 7:01 the next Saturday, January 12. It would be at Loon Mountain, which is a ski resort in New Hampshire. It's about an hour and a half away from North Reading and 15 minutes away from Beacon Resort, where we will be staying. We have a package that we have gotten together with the head of the ski resort, and the package included, on Friday night when we get there, upon arrival, we'd have a pizza party, a game night, which would include the pool and the recreation room, and one night at the lodge at the Beacon Resort, along with on Saturday, a hot breakfast buffet, a lift onto the mountain. To get there, a transportation bus, and the meals and room are included. The only thing that really is not included is the driver gratuaries, which we give one to, like, $1 to $2 per student for a ride that we go on. The cost, for 30 people, the quad would be $145, the triple would be $168, the double would be $153, and the single would be $215. If we get our maximum of 30 people, there would be three free chaperone packages that we would use on our chaperones. For 20 people, we would have a quad of $159, triple would be $167, the double $182, and the single $229. Who would be chaperoning? Obviously, our school advisor, Ms. Brown, Kathy Stankis, Justin Madison, and other potentials would be Mr. Martin and Ms. Larrity. Contact information, we are booking it through Ski 93 Trips, Stores, and Travel. This is their address, along with their contact telephone numbers, their fax, and Beacon Resort's website, which is the resort where we'd be staying, which is 15 minutes from Loon Mountain. Mrs. Brown, who's our trip advisor, her email is listed there, along with her telephone number at the school extension. Any questions?
Any questions for the committee?
I haven't seen times down to the minute like that.
Exactly.
Since Ms. Brown took the kids on the eighth-grade trip.
Yeah, I was.
That's the last time I saw that in print. 7:01. I was impressed with that. So I, I know your advisors.
You won't forget.
That's right.
I want to make sure that you're back at, what time were you?
7:01.
7:01. Not 7:00 o'clock.
You're going to be here, right?
I'm going to be here to make sure you're back at 7:01.
We'll call her driveway.
Any other questions?
Congratulations on a good volleyball season, by the way, too.
So far, we have around 15 that came to our informational meeting last Wednesday. There has been more student interest, and we're working on getting good clauses out.
Yes, I'll second Jerry's congratulations on the volleyball team.
Speaking of sports teams, they made the tournament again this year.
All right, if there aren't any other questions at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Adventure Club ski trip to Loon Mountain.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion, hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ananimos. Thanks, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, are they, did they have? You have another? Yes, but I'll sit down here for a second. Thanks, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
He's done for the rest of the meeting.
Like the airplane pilot pointing a laser up at him. All right, we have two more groups to present tonight. So what we're going to do is, we're going to actually switch into some fine cuisine here, and we have some representatives, I am really, from Chartwell's, and they are going to come up to us and come up and not only talk to us, but they're going to feed us, so we can learn more about the new nutritional, nutrition standards that we have in our lunch department, in our lunches here at all of our schools. So if you want to come up and, oh, and it's Mr. Bauer's birthday, so that's all this food is here for Mr. Bauer's today.
Happy birthday.
It's very good.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to start out with a brief PowerPoint.
Okay. Thanks, Carl.
I'm joined today by Anna McGovern. Our, as you all know Anna, she's our Director of Food Services here at North Reading, and Chris Callahan, who's the Regional Director of Chartwell. Appreciate your coming tonight. Shortly, they're going to do the fun part, but I'm going to do a little bit of context here and a little bit of quick background. The school committee and public knows that there have been significant changes made to the school lunch program nationally. Specifically, the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 was implemented in North Reading and all of the surrounding communities this September. The, as background, it's important also to understand that the National School Lunch Program is a federal program, and we have to abide by the federal guidelines. And there are many advantages, though, of our participation in the National School Lunch Program. To begin with, every single meal that we serve that fulfills their nutritional guidelines provides the district a meal reimbursement. We literally have a process whereby we quantify the number of meals that we serve per day, per school, that meet those guidelines, and each time we do that, we are eligible for a reimbursement. In addition, participation in the school lunch program allows us access to the Federal Commodity Program, where we're able to, we'll point some of this out as we move forward, we're able to acquire foods at significant discount. Dairy products, meat products, grain products are all afforded to us if we fulfill the guidelines of the NSLP, the National School Lunch Program. And of course, also, this program allows us to support the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. There are over 200 families in North Reading schools that do qualify for the ability to participate in the lunch program at a free or reduced lunch rate. So those are three of the kind of important factors that govern our participation in the program. So, as I said in September, we implemented, Anna and her staff, Chartwell implemented a new program. It affects the lunches that we serve at midday at lunch, and although we're not here to talk about it tonight, there was also a Massachusetts law passed, which governs food outside of the school lunch program, such as vending machines, such as bake sales, such as the kind of foods that you serve to students during, anytime during the school day or after. The primary motivating factor for the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, of course, was to attempt to improve health and to help combat childhood obesity. So there are several meal patterns that we're going to discuss further here, and I'm going to quickly go through them, and we'll illustrate them shortly. To begin with, the menus that are now served to North Reading children fall into three distinct grade categories, as you can see, elementary, middle school, and high school. There are different requirements at each level. Number two, the new guidelines require that we pay attention to food and vegetables in a different way than we have in the past. There are prescribed portions and quantities of fruits and vegetables that are even broken down, as noted in number three here, are even broken down into vegetable subcategories by color. We are required to serve vegetable categories according to some of the categories that are shown there, and we're required to do so on a weekly basis. In addition, the grain crust, the grains that we serve are changing. We are now required to serve 50% of our bread must be whole grains. Number five, milk, as you can see, there are regulations there. The white milk that we serve must be 1%, however, if we serve flavored milk, that must be fat-free. Number six, there are very specific portion sizes for meats, and I think what you're starting to see here is a kind of a shift on the plate. You're seeing, in some cases, slightly reduced proteins in the form of meats, slightly reduced bread portions and calories substituted by fruits and vegetables, as I noted before. Moving into number seven, we are no longer serving trans foods that contain trans fats. We are reducing sodium, and we are under a requirement that certain fruits and vegetables be provided at every meal in order to earn that reimbursement that I spoke of earlier. So that is a very quick overview of some of the changes that we're going to, we're going to display in a moment. So, in summary, the school lunch patterns had not changed in 15 years. We had seen the same kind of thing for many years, so the school lunch program was due for an overhaul. Any study you see notes that the average child's diet does lack fruits, vegetables, and whole grains, and if we want to participate in the National School Lunch Program, we need to toe the line and begin serving slightly different portions, as shown there. It's no, we are sensing and feeling some resistance from the public and from students. We understand that change is difficult. We understand that there are some foods that we're serving now, in many cases, students haven't seen before. So we're hoping that over a period of time, that change that we're now seeing, and the unfamiliarity that's there, will start to dissipate. So one of the purposes of tonight is to try to show the public what we're doing, and to start to see some support from all of the stakeholders here, whether it be administrators, teachers, or school committees, so that we can move forward. And over time, continue to serve a healthy nutritious lunch. So, at this point, I'd like to recognize Anna and Chris, and I don't know if the committee wants to gather around the table, or if you can see, whatever you're comfortable with doing. We'd like to go over some of the typical foods. Now, this is, come on, I'm asking you a question, Anna. Are these foods, just for tonight, are these foods that you've never seen before?
Well, these foods are being introduced at the middle of the high school this week, the yogurt parfaits. I had, about a month ago, we had a tour of North Reading, and Chartwell's, my peers all came in, and to upgrade, to see what we could do to make it better for North Reading. And all of us went out there to the cafeterias to sit down and ask the students what they would like to eat. And at the high school, we said, we have like a fruit parfait, or a melon parfait, so this is what we're coming up with, and I really, I'm going to try. If we have extra guests here, they can also.
Yes, sure. It's funny here.
It's a low-fat yogurt, low-fat granola, and as you heard Carl Nelson mention, commodity straw, these are commodity blueberries. They're from the government, so it's a very minimal cost. And there was a girl here tonight, Anna Martin, they swim, and she says, can you do something like that on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday mornings when I come in? And I said, yes, I can.
Serve a breakfast, yes.
So, and we had hockey players come into the cafeteria this morning looking for food, and.
They weren't looking for this, though.
No, they weren't.
They have really wanted breakfast.
They really wanted breakfast, and now they're coming into the building, and, you know, we went through a bagel, a granola bar, so we had cereal, and I just discussed it with my cook today, and we said, I think we should go with it. Let them, give them something to eat. They're going to Dunkin' Donuts.
Right.
So let them eat here, or it's healthy, because we offer them fruit. You know, we offer milk, we offer water, we are no longer allowed to offer juice, according to the new guidelines, in an eight or a 10 ounce, even if it's 100% juice, it has to be a four-ounce juice, but we do have it available.
Now, this parfait, what would this be, what part of lunch would this?
This size would be, actually, this would really compete with the à la carte restrictions, so that it would be an à la carte at this size, but we also offer one as a meal, as a meal for, a larger one for a meal. So that would meet all the requirements of your meal component.
This is really good. This is actually what I eat every day.
Oh, then you should come, you should come to the school.
The challenge, the challenge we're, again, everybody's facing, is the changing habits. You know, the challenge for a food provider to be creative and figure out, okay, what would the students like? What can we get them to eat? Because they're changing their habits, and like anything, it takes a long time to do that. I mean, Carl Nelson said, the 15 years since the last standard's changed, and when that happened, that was ongoing change, ongoing getting used to those standards as well. So there's a period of time that we have to adjust to that change, and the key for us is to try to, you know, minimize any decrease in meal sales and try to get, you know, input from the students and the community, how we can actually bolster those sales.
See, I personally think what's going on here is what needs to happen. I guess philosophically, it needs to happen at home, though, also.
Correct.
And I think, I think this is great, but if it's not reinforced at home, then that's where you have the battle, and Carl has the battle, and the workers in the different cafeterias in the battle of convincing the kids.
Sure.
To eat this stuff.
Yeah, my question is, do you do this so they'll get one healthy meal a day? Do you do this to try to educate them on what is good? Because they're eating 1,095 meals altogether.
Exactly.
Only 180 of them are here.
Exactly.
So, most of the time, they're not here.
Well, and you think, think about it, you know, there's certain things you educate, certain things, I mean, you've got, one of the most popular items is a buffalo chicken pizza, okay? It's got, it's a whole white wheat dough with flaxseed in it, so it's very good for them, but you don't really, I mean, it looks like a regular white pizza dough. So it's not, you're not promoting that piece of it, but you want to make sure that, you know, it tastes good for the students, you're actually sampling with the kids, so they, it's acceptable product. And we did that with this product last year. We actually tested it against our old whole wheat product, which was really dry, and they seemed to like it much, much better, so.
These are cut in smaller slices, also, for you to try. But they are a regular, you know, it's a four-by-six slice. And the other thing is, the students also feel, it's perception, a lot is perception. Oh, it's too thin, you know, it's too thin, can I get more? And that's when we try to offer, well, look, if you took, if you took a slice of pizza and a lot, and we do have salad, and they help themselves to salad, and the grape tomatoes, they take like crazy, and the salads, they are starting, the students that are eating are eating healthier. That much I can say.
And it's actually.
What do you do with this?
Those are actually, just a sample, so, for example, on the table here, we've got some sample meals. So this, you would see elementary, this is like an elementary meal, where they don't get as much offered to them, because, again, timing and making those choices. So that's a sample of an elementary tray. This would be a nice turkey sub with whole wheat crust, whole wheat roll, some mandarin oranges, fresh salad, skim or no-fat chocolate, or a regular milk, 1% milk. This is a nacho meal that meets the requirements, with lettuce and tomatoes on the side, salsa, pear, and a. pear, and a... And these are actually some secondary meals. Again, you move away from the tray once you get to the secondary level, but this is actually a panini sandwich with a nice chipotle sweet potato fry, okay, instead of a regular potato.
Panini sandwiches are being introduced tomorrow at the middle school.
This actually is one of the most popular, is the wrap at the secondary level, but this has been a big issue, because the size of the bread had changed. We could only get an eight, eight-inch wrap to wrap the sandwiches, which was a very, very, it was a tough thing for the students, because it, I mean, the ingredients were the same, but the wrap was so, it looked smaller. And then the food service employees had a tough time making it, it was so small. So we actually developed a 10-inch wrap, it's a little thinner. We had our supplier work harder and get us a thinner wrap, so it can cover the whole meal, so it's a, it's a little bit larger in size, so this is something that we just brought on.
And you can imagine the response when you have 100 food service directors in a room, when they tell us they're going to do that. We're all like, oh, we can't do that. So, they developed, they were able to do that for us, to help the students and help us work with it, so that we don't give, we give the right amount, and it's a much nicer product when we give it, because students do eat with their eyes. We all eat with our eyes, it looks good, and like you said, what do you do with those vegetables? We put them in pans, and that's what we do, a lot of times we'll do...
If you look at here, you'll see actually how they're set up in the serving lines on top.
Yep.
So they actually are displayed versus color, so it's, again, the focus is to offer a multitude of fruits and vegetables that they can take with their meal, and that's the tough change for them, to get used to taking all those fresh fruits. Elementary, I mean, they're taking it like crazy, so whether they're eating it all, that's the key, to monitor that, the waste, too.
Now, one of the questions I have on that, because, and this is one of the biggest issues I have with school lunches, is that the kids don't have enough time, regardless of the level.
Yeah.
So if you're giving them more choices, does that slow the lines down, and then the kids actually have a little less time to eat?
At times, at times, but we have two servers at the elementaries, so sometimes they're serving the hot, and, you know, I'll say, oh, hey, you know, you know, Cliff, how about some of these? Would you like to try these? I'll put a few on your tray. So we do try to do that, where we do have the two servers, and at the Hood School, I have a lead there that will go out at lunchtime, and she'll say, oh, did you try these peppers? Oh, you haven't tried these peppers. So, we try to go out there, she's very interactive.
And they're cut, too. A lot of the sides are cut for the elementary level, so it's easier to get on their tray, so it's a quicker service.
I think at all levels, and this is your issue, this is time and learning issue, and school day issue, the kids just don't have enough time.
Right.
What do we, what do we have, 22 minutes?
Right.
Or something like that? It'd be nice if you could at least have an hour.
If you think about it, it takes them about five minutes to get to the lunchroom.
Right.
It takes them, average, seven to nine minutes to get to the line.
So they have about five minutes to eat.
So that's, you know, it is, it is a...
And although we cup, although we do cup the, sometimes, most of the fruits, we don't lid them, because if I say, here's a carrot or a pepper, they can't see what's in it with the lid on it. So we try to, you know, put them out like this, or in a long pan, so that the students can see actually what they're eating. You know, because if everything is cupped with lid, you really can't see it, and you can't see a red vegetable.
It looks fresh, but that's not correct.
Yeah, you think, yeah, so, you know, and the students do, at the high school, when they come to the line, they are more adventurous, and they do try, and I'm going back to commodities. This is commodity corn, these are commodity kidney beans, commodity green beans, that's commodity beef, salsa, so the benefits of being of North Reading to be part of the National School Lunch Program, and we do use it.
Now, are these, are you selling these already, yogurt?
Actually, we just started them.
They'll be in, they're, my order's coming in tomorrow, so they'll be starting Wednesday.
I think these would be pretty popular.
That was excellent.
And it's the low-fat vanilla yogurt, and, you know, the plain yogurt, I have to tell you, doesn't sell. There's no flavor in the plain yogurt, and I don't want to do the strawberry, and because the strawberries, I'll be getting government commodity strawberries soon, and I'll put that on there, trust me, we use it all.
It's been, it's been a real challenge. Everybody's heard the, seen the video out there where the high school students falling down because they're, they're still hungry at the end of the day, that's, it's on the, well, it's, one of the reasons we're trying to get out, too, is to show, you know, what we do serve, you know? Because there's actually, maybe a little cool, but actually, it was there about a half hour ago.
Look at that, I'm doing the whole pizza.
Oh, that's quite all right.
I was just going to comment about the presentation.
It was there. It was there. Well, at the high school with the new line, we, at the high school with this new line, we don't even serve it on anything, we serve it right on there, and she puts a little bit like cornmeal on the bottom.
This is actually, some pictures of it right now.
I'm going to lay double tax, kid.
Sure.
You're concerned about only having a healthy meal at school? Maybe not as much of a concern, I think, you know, running in circles with the younger kids, a lot of the parents are always concerned about, you know, providing a healthy meal at home.
But that's what's going on from, that was the point.
But this just re...
Yes.
I think it'll help at home.
Right. And we want to make sure, I mean, this is a great opportunity for parents to see at home, too, you know, if they haven't tried the lunch program, you know, what they can get for their kid, instead of packing their meal, I mean, it's a great value. You know, the value...
This is a very popular lunch.
We did analysis on school lunch, and actually, just to pack a lunch at home, it's pretty costly. It's over $3.50, $3.50 to pack a lunch every day, and the convenience of it, so if we can show what variety we have, maybe we can actually help build participation.
This is actually good, too. It's spicy, it's not dry. Now, Carl, have we ever had, Carl, have we ever thought of having a night where we actually bring parents in and feed them, to show them what we're giving? I mean, that might help.
Some, some school districts do open houses, if you have open houses.
I did at the Batch Elder when the new parents come in.
Yeah.
In the end of August, September, and I had very, to be honest with you, I had very little response.
Yeah, I was just thinking, another idea would be to post some of the ingredients up online somewhere.
Yep, and some of them, yeah, we do have, and we also, I'm...
We're developing a new website.
Yes.
So actually, the website will actually host a lot of the pictures, a lot of videos of the foods we're serving, and have a tremendous amount of links, resources for parents, too. So we're actually, we met with Carl on that, and we got approval, that we're going to roll that out in the next few weeks, so...
But I think reaching out is the theme we're discussing here. In addition to tonight, thanks to Chris and Chartwell, who's going to come into the high school on December 4th.
13th?
13th, we, no, the day before, 13th is no lunches, the 12th.
We'll be conducting some questionnaires right at the high school lunchroom. There's going to be an iPad...
Yep, iPad survey.
And there's going to be a kind of a little survey monkey thing done on an iPad, I believe, on that day.
Yeah.
So we'll be getting direct feedback from students at that point. We're talking about doing a district-wide survey monkey...
For parents, right.
Parents, so this is the second thing we're doing. And we've even had some discussions at the elementary level of bringing a parent to lunch.
That's what I want to do, it's, it's, it's...
That's a good idea.
The children like it, I would only do it for naturally, one class, I mean, if it's a first and second grade, we could do it. They would order, they could see what this child is eating, you know, they could have lunch with their student, and the students like that, too, and they get to see what they're having.
Now, if, I was getting the pizza meal, would it be one slice of pizza?
No, it's actually, this is actually smar cut, I wasn't sure what people were tasting. It's probably, it's probably twice the size.
Easily, yeah.
You know, for a portion.
See, this is really good.
And, and you could get, you could get salad, you could get fruits, you could get vegetables, you could get milk, everything that comes with it. And that's what I tell a lot of these students, when I'm out there doing the cash, I'll say, that's not a lunch. You know, I said, first and foremost, I'm a parent.
Right.
I said, if you go home and tell your parent that you had this for lunch, I said, it's unacceptable, you need to go in there and get a fruit. I don't want to eat it now, I said, but you know what, I bet you'll eat that apple at lunch. Or you'll eat that apple later on. And most of them do. And the, and the cashiers at the schools make sure that they have a fruit or a vegetable. It's all about getting them used to having it. I know, one time, the parents were concerned, I'm paying, you know, $2.50 for a bagel, my son gets a bagel every day. Well, this is it, it's a bagel, it's a one-ounce cheese stick, it's a yogurt, it's cinnamon apples, commodity. And then get a milk and any additional fruit or vegetables that they want on the line.
Now, would that qualify for reimbursement?
Yes.
Yes. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, the protein, the fruit, the milk.
Why does that qualify?
The grain, two ounces of protein, and your fruit, okay?
Now, the only thing is, you couldn't serve it every day, because of the limited amount of bread grains we can serve in a week, so...
Right. So on Thursdays, I do it four days a week. On Thursdays, I don't do it, because it puts me over the limit for the elementary schools. Elementary has to have nine and a half, elementary, elementary has to have nine and a half grains a week, that'll put me at 10, if I serve it every day. And someone might not get it every day, but some child might get that every day, and then I'm over the limit. So on Thursdays, I usually, I have to change it up.
It's a science, though.
There's a long ways since English muffin pizza.
It is, yes.
Now, we're seeing pizza here, we're seeing these parfaits, the yogurt parfaits, a couple typical lunches. What are some of the other featured menu items that you would have at the different school levels?
Tomorrow, well, tomorrow at the high school, we're having shepherd pie, homemade shepherd pie, which, again, government commodities for the meat and the vegetables, and that also comes with the whole wheat dinner roll, and with all types of sides. At the elementaries, today, they had homemade baked macaroni and cheese, and a hot dog on a whole wheat roll. That's what they had today.
And also, actually, a popular one is a breakfast for lunch, still, that's probably one of the most, breakfast for lunch, probably the most popular one, along with...
Which is the French toast and tater tots, and I can't offer that as often, the, you know, the big one is chicken nuggets. They love their chicken nuggets.
And then, secondary is anything, anything spicy, chicken, chicken's number one, still, a spicy chicken.
See, this is spicy, this is good.
Yep, yep.
I'm not going to have a pizza right now.
And we'll do, and we'll do a spicy, and you know what, we make, we also have pre-made sandwiches. We have pre-made sandwiches at the secondary levels, at the middle and the high school, and we have, they're all made, like, we'll do a spicy buffalo chicken wrap, and we'll make sure that it has the components in that with the fruit or vegetables, so if they come through, and they have that, that we make sure it's a reimbursable lunch. We always encourage them to take additional food, but we, we, you know, we offer all that. Today, today we had egg salad, and I thought, oh, I serve the line today.
How many choices, at elementary, you have, three or four choices a day?
Elementary, I offer four choices a day.
That's what I was going to ask you, because I'm not a shepherd's pie fan, so if I go through, and I'm like, I don't want shepherd's pie, I'm going to have two or three other options.
Yep, you're going to have a bagel lunch, you're going to have maybe the sandwich sub of the day.
Mm-hmm, or a bagel bag.
Right.
Except on Thursdays.
Right, on Thursdays, so. And in the secondary, usually middle school, you're working with about maybe 10 to 15 choices, and in the high school, a bit more, so...
And at the deli line at the high school, I can make anything you would like.
So they can come through and have a sandwich made?
Right there and there on the line.
Salad, or...
Mm-hmm, right there and there on the line.
They need the time there, in that one.
They do.
You know, we, we see, those of us who have college-age kids, what's going on in the colleges, in terms of the options they have, and you know, one of the reasons you know why colleges are getting so, are so expensive, the food, it's like, the kitchens, the food they serve is unbelievable, there's 15, 20 options for every meal.
The food selection's better than any buffet at any...
19 meals a week. I know, I paid for both of them.
And then they come home from college and say, we're just having this for dinner?
Right, exactly. What are my options?
They've got selection for Chinese, Italian.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And in January, I'll do an Asian, in January, with the Chinese New Year, I do an Asian nation, and I do that type of thing.
Right about that.
You know.
Yeah.
And I'll do the fortune cookie and the egg roll for the Asian nation to promote that. So, I do, we try to, we try to do what's best for the student, always, and I always tell them, if, look, and if there's something you really don't like, come back, bring it back, don't eat all of it and come back with one bite, tell me you don't like it. Like, a lot of times, when I did the shepherd pie, I have little two-ounce containers, I said, try it.
Right.
And they, and of course, the minute you say, try it, they all take it.
Right.
Which is good, it all does, it opens it up for something new.
See, show and tell is always better, that, like, when Carl talks to us about lunches, and he gives us a chart and numbers, it's not as good as this is tonight. Tonight's been much more effective.
You know what, it is, but I, my goal is to get it out there and have my lunch participation go up, that's, that's my number-one goal, to keep the students...
This is a four-ounce product that you can serve now with the à la carte, and with a meal, it's actually four-ounce, 100% juice, and it's a slush, but it's interactive, so we pull it out, and the kids actually move around, and then they drink it. So it's a newer item, but it's actually something new above and beyond just the water we can serve now, so...
The à la carte has gone down.
It starts frozen, but now it's actually just a little slush now.
What's high school level, or...
This is actually all level, but real popular at the elementary.
The à la carte selections have, have gone down immensely. I used to sell chipwich ice cream sandwiches.
Things you can't sell anymore, right?
Correct. Correct, chipwich, taco tacos, they're gone.
One of the things we might think of doing is having a cable show, you know, a cable program, half hour, 45 minutes, Santa, Chris, you, maybe the superintendent, and sitting down with this kind of presentation, and having you eat everything that's on the table, but also explaining how good it is at the same time. But that might be effective.
Are you guys sure?
If you're not coming, could you at least send the food?
Exactly, exactly.
Right, just like the athletes.
And we can do salads, we do salads also, and as far as our toppings, the croutons, we make our own now. We don't even buy them anymore, because it's better, because it's not processed.
That's a shift, too. A lot of, most of, all our foods are actually prepared, not processed foods that we work with, so...
I would love attending some of the PTA meetings.
We talked about that, yeah, we talked about that, too.
I did that at the Hood Elementary last year, and it was received very well, and I did it also at the Little.
It's the timing, I guess, when it happens, if, how good participation you have at the event. Sometimes I find, you know, especially new grades to an open house for parents, when they're going around to check out the school, making sure that the dining area is actually part of that, to show them how to walk through, what choices they get, so...
Well, when you have the night at the high school, for example, where the parents come in, and they go to all their students' classes, right? Add 15 minutes onto that night, and have the parents go to lunch.
Sure.
And have out a, the display of different, not a display, but the actual food.
Middle school, maybe, actually, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, middle school, so, or a lunch. This is not staying up.
That's my makeshift easel, yeah, sorry.
So as we bring this demonstration to a close, I also want to take a minute to recognize the food service associates. There's been a lot of pressure on Anna's staff at all five schools this year to learn a lot of new techniques, a lot of new recipes, and they've done an outstanding job, and they're doing it in the midst of some controversy, so I just wanted to take a moment to thank Anna, Chris, and the food service associates.
They are very loyal and dedicated, the staff, they are, at the town in North Reading. They are, they are at the town in North Reading. Very little turnover, they like their jobs, they come in and, you know, we plug through, they do it.
And appreciate it. You've got, you've got my support. This food is tasty, it's healthy, and it's good for you.
What I like to say about potato chips, nutritious and delicious.
Well, I have to tell you, we prefer a regular chip to any type of baked anything.
So a smaller size.
Because a smaller size, because a baked chip is just a potato chip. It's just a potato, with oil.
The one thing that I noticed is you don't have one of the key, basic food groups.
Sweet?
Chocolate.
Chocolate, yes. That's what the other...
Chocolate milk.
Chocolate milk. Chocolate milk.
Any other questions? Anything else? No. This is great, really appreciate you coming in.
Oh, help yourself.
Yeah, help yourself, we're just gonna bring back...
Grapes, grapes, grapes are at the middle and the high school tomorrow.
Are these from order?
No. No.
Thank you for the time, too.
Thanks a lot.
Grapes are not. You know, the commodity, the USGA does not give fresh commodity.
They don't do fresh.
Very little. Occasionally, you get apples and potatoes.
It's other states, Connecticut, Rhode Island, they do more.
Yes.
So we need to figure out how to get more mass.
No, I don't dare, I don't dare. Take, take that.
It looks, it looks good, I know. Thanks, Anna, I'll come by.
Those are the sweet potato, and I was not too sure.
You know, the food makes the next one a bad presentation.
Food specials are good for you.
Until right now. You gay?
I don't eat anything.
Oh, my gosh, that's so hot.
Very nice, John. What is?
Spicy, sweet potato fry.
Yes?
I'll just leave it off.
They don't have to get rid of those foods.
Thank you very much.
I gotta...
It melts on fire.
I shouldn't be coming back here. I gotta leave again.
Get some more food.
I've been displaced tonight. Oops. My grape, my grapes escaped. They're all over the place.
Been dropping your food all over the place.
I know. Can't take me anywhere. Okay. Oh, thank you.
Patrick, I'm gonna top this one.
Do you have food?
No, I think, I think we still...
Do you have dessert, Patrick?
No. Okay, so that was a very entertaining presentation. Again, thank you, Anna and Chris, that was awesome.
Vomited.
So next, I, we asked, we had asked the superintendent at the beginning of this school year, on a fairly regular basis, to have, give us presentations on different aspects of the educational program. We've had one on special education, we've talked about MCAS, I think we're gonna have one on No Adam at some point.
Yes, you are.
And tonight, we have a presentation on Fundations, which is a K through three program, or...
It's a K through three phonological phonemic awareness, phonics and spelling program. And so this evening, we have the Director of Academic Services, Patrick Daly. We have Jennifer Postorino, I knew I was gonna blow that, at the, from the Batch Elder. She's a grade-one teacher at the Batch Elder School. Susan Hegarty, who is our Hood School reading specialist, and Rosie Brennan, who is our Little School grade-two teacher. And they're going to work with Patrick Daly. I've been told that this is going to be a bit interactive, so...
I was gonna say, I hope you don't ask Jerry to spell anything.
I'm gonna pass it on to Patrick.
Thank you, everyone, thanks for having us here. Tough act to follow, but I think we, we got some, some great presentation here. So I, I was just gonna start with a brief overview, then we have a PowerPoint that Susan will lead us in. We then have a video, Jennifer prepared to show some students in action, then we have an interactive piece, and Rosie will work on it and then we'll hear. And there's some posters behind you here, so we set up a little bit of a Fundations classroom for you here. So I just wanna start off with a, a little bit of the back here and the history, the backstory. When I came into the position a couple of years ago, we were in the first year of a pilot with Fundations at the Little School, they were exploring it at the Little School in grade one. It was a Hood school, they also were going on some trips over to Reading to see Fundations in action. We had some other programs in place here and throughout the school. Fundations also involved handwriting, and we had handwriting programs. So there was a bit of a learning curve here, where were we gonna adopt this, what were some of the transitions? But I just wanted to, I really appreciate these opportunities to kinda showcase some of the things we're doing, and also the great work of our curriculum leaders. So I wanted to say that all three of these specialists, one from each school here, have done a tremendous job, along with the principals, in working on this implementation of a brand-new program, bringing all the other teachers along, they've done a tremendous job, each of them. Especially, I wanted to recognize Susan, who is, part of our philosophy is that we have a train-the-trainer program. So part of our professional development that we outlined here involves not only bringing somebody in to train our staff in June, the year before they implement, we also have a piece of ongoing professional development where the trainer comes back and goes to each school and works with the teachers' models lessons, or the teacher models lessons, they have a conference. So this is really a model we believe in, a sustained professional development model that myself and our leaders worked out with, with Fundations to, to make this successful. But in addition to that, Susan has been trained, the district supported her to be a trainer of teachers. So last year, we had kindergarten grade one, we trained all our teachers. Susan is now a official certified Wilson Fundations trainer for grades K and 1. So if new teachers come into the district, or if a K and 1 needs some follow-up, some, some further study, or if teachers move grades, Susan is now certified to provide that same level of training through Wilson. And we've asked Susan again to do this for Level Two, grade two, where we're in now. So this is what we're looking at. We're also preliminary looking at the success that we've had in K one, two, and we're talking about the beginnings of looking to implement it to Level Three, which is as far as this program goes. It, we're gonna talk about all the different aspects of this. It is a bonus program, but it also relates to all of our, you know, the core of our reading and writing skills, I'm sorry, the core of our reading skills is gonna make us better in every subject area. The better we are reading in general, the better we're gonna be able to access that content and science, in math, in social studies, at all levels. So this is really at the core of absolutely everything we do.
Patrick, when you talk about writing, where does penmanship come in? And I guess, I'd even ask, are we even teaching penmanship anymore, or what?
Handwriting component.
Handwriting component?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Talking about handwriting, the cursive discussion is, is one of the things we have. I know there's a lot out there now about what's happening with cursive, but penmanship and writing and this, I don't know if you're gonna get it to in your presentation, but there's absolutely a fundamental link with learning the letters and learning to write the letters, which was a little bit of a shift for a lot of our teachers. This really made a lot of sense, and we've done a lot of talking about how this all connects, learning the letters and actually writing the letters out. So without further ado, I'm gonna pass this along to Susan, who's gonna take us through our PowerPoint.
Patrick, can you assist? Patrick.
Sure.
So what we've done is, I brought samples of kindergarten student notebooks and the first grade and the second grade ones, so we just thought I'd pass them around. Each student has, in kindergarten, first grade and second grade, student composition books and notebooks to use, and they give them on a daily basis with their teachers. Each kindergarten, first grade and second grade classroom has a minimum of thirty minutes of Fundations lesson every single day. Sometimes the lessons take forty-five minutes, and that's in your general education classroom. Other students who need more support, like, that would come to me as a regular ed reading teacher, they would get a double-dose Fundations lesson, where they would come to me anywhere from two to five times a week, and they would get that double dose of Fundations to support them, so that they don't fall further behind. Also, children that are on IEPs, they would also get that double-dose Fundations lesson anywhere from two to five times a week. So these are samples. I did bring my manuals, the kindergarten and first grade manual is together, second grade manual is there, too. Just wanna see what, how it's set up. And we also brought a simple kindergarten puzzle, you wanna open that up and pass this on, so you can see some of the materials. Teachers' kits all come with posters, so these are some samples of posters that are in the classrooms. So the materials that come with each teacher kit are quite extensive. So up here, we have that. Fundations is actually, it's an adaptation of the Wilson Reading System that was developed by the Wilson Language Training Company, which is based out in Oxford, Massachusetts. Patrick mentioned that I've been trained, I've gone out to Oxford, Mass, went on three days this summer, and it was a great experience for me. I met people from all around the country. So all different states are sending people out to these trainings, and it was really nice to be able to talk with people that are in the same position as myself, where they were regular ed classroom teachers, and they are being supported with this particular program. So like Patrick said, it's a very structured, multi-sensory program. Kindergarten really focuses on the handwriting piece as well as first grade. We haven't, second grade, they don't do as much as the handwriting, because they really get extensive training in first grade, in kindergarten and first grade. And we haven't gotten to the third grade component yet, so I'm not sure how handwriting is handled at the third grade level. Okay? Fundations also, it is aligned with the Common Core, so there's, I think, did you have a packet for that?
I didn't print that out, but I could pass on.
Okay, right. So the highlights of the program is that it's, it focuses on systematic phonics and study word structure. All the skills are taught in a sequential, like a spiraling curriculum, whatever is taught in kindergarten spirals up with a different dimension in first grade and then in second grade. We have, we have one of our little highlights that the students all love, this is called echo. And so they teach, when the teachers are teaching sounds, they, children are taught that, if, for instance, they're working on vowels, the teacher pulls echo up and says, "A apple ah," and you're supposed to echo back, "A apple ah." We also have baby echo, so that when the children are involved, the children love this. When the children are involved in being like the drill leaders, because every session starts off with drilling sounds, the children are actually engaged and they get to be the drill leader. And it's a great way for us as teachers to assess who really knows the sounds. Okay? And it involves, and so all the children are engaged. There are assessments at the end of every unit, and we have a nice, Fundations has a nice online test tracking, so that all teachers add in, put in their teacher's scores at the end of every single unit, and then we get to see if children are, if the whole class is at eighty percent or above, they're considered a benchmark. If not, then we need to stop and we need to reteach that particular unit. I brought the manuals, as we said, and I did bring a home support pack, because every level has a home support pack, where the teachers send out the home support pack prior to teaching the unit. So there are practice exercises in there for the parents to do with their children. It also has a nice letter that explains exactly what is taught in each unit. So there's a sample for, for grade two.
Okay.
Okay? And as we said, it is a spiraling curriculum, there's a definite, very explicit way of teaching the skills, so we go from letter formation and phonological phonemic awareness and sound mastery in kindergarten, that's all still brought back up into first grade, where we work more on the phonics, the vocabulary. Trick words are what we call sight words. And then we have, we work on reading fluency and the comprehension piece in the written composition as we get up into the higher grades. So what we've done is, this is what, how we implemented Fundations last year in North Reading, it was kindergarten and first grade. And then this year is the first year for second grade, and it's our second year for kindergarten and first. And we just had a recent training for all the special education staff, anyone that might be involved in working with Fundations with children, they were trained with Kathy Sharkwell, who's the literacy specialist from the Wilson company. So what, as Patrick already said, each grade level has been supported by Kathy Sharkwell, the literacy specialist from Wilson Language Training Corporation. It's been really nice, last year, she went to each of the elementary schools, they had a designated day where she would conduct modeling sessions for, like, say, the kindergarten teachers, and then afterwards, we would meet in a classroom, and the kindergarten, kindergarten teachers would get to ask Kathy, like, specific questions about what they noticed about the different lessons, or maybe questions that they had about things that they were having difficulties with. She did it for first grade, too, and that, that's the model that we're using this year in second grade, that each elementary school has three designated modeling and coaching sessions with Kathy.
Thank you so much. So Jennifer has prepared a video, she's also one of our great technology leaders in the district. She's put on quite a few sessions for teachers with smart boards, she's an iPad user, so this actually filmed recently with students in action using her iPad, so I think it does a little bit of everything.
H, K, J, M, U, K, hike, L, M, O, M, N, T, A, nothing.
The whole word was dish pans. If you're stuck, just retap your syllables. Hang on, someone tell me, what are these? What are those? Dilly?
Vowels.
Vowels, and what is those special vowels doing?
Diagraphs.
Right, and what else?
Every word must have a vowel, is what he says.
Excellent, nice job. So if these are vowels, what are the yellow cards? What are the yellow cards? Oh, look at that. Consonants, excellent. All right, what are these cards right down here? W, H, T, H, C, H, S, H, N, C, K? Keely?
Diagrams.
Excellent, diagrams, and what are diagrams? Keely?
Two letters, one sound.
Two letters, I mean, one sound.
And that's it, I'm out, I'm out. I'm tapping out right now.
I've been eliminated.
Bonus letters, excellent, and bonus cards.
I wouldn't be able to graduate from all that.
They hang out at the end of the word, excellent. And what words, what two words don't fit this rule?
Busting.
Busting, yes, and they come after words that have a what in the middle of them. Remember, can we remember? Well, what kind of a vowel, a short vowel or a long vowel? Short vowel, excellent, nice job. And what's this, these green cards? A, L, L, A, N, A, M. What are those? Noah. What kind of sounds are these?
All.
Right? And, and, and. Right, what do we call them? Remember? Can we remember? Who can help them out? Jacob, what do you call them?
Glued sound.
They're glued sounds, because the sounds... Okay, first graders, the next word is wish. Please tap out the word wish.
Wish.
Okay, write it down. Nice job. All right, excellent. Next word, now we're on to current words. The word is Sam. Please tap out the word Sam.
Sam.
Don't forget to mark your words. Excellent, okay, the next word is plan. Tap out the word plan.
Plan.
Nice job, write it down. Excellent, nice job. All right, we're moving on to trick words. Please, you are going to finger spell. Have, are you ready? Everybody's finger, finger spell have. H, A, V, E. Okay, now let's pencil spell have. H, A, V, E. Excellent, nice job, first grade.
I like that finger spell.
It's a good thing they didn't have digraphs when we were a kid, so we didn't have to worry about those back then, right?
Now, well, those real students are active.
No, 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 no.
They wasn't really students.
Yeah, it was a live performance. Um, as Susan talked about, one of the things that, the greatest component of, I feel, is Fundations, it's thirty minutes. It's a tight, compact thirty minutes where you skill and drill, you do composition work, the kids are moving from the rug to their desks, back to the rug again. It does incorporate all those multi-sensory, some of the things that you didn't get to see was we skywrite with our arms, the letters, the formation of the letters and things like that, to really connect all those different sensory pieces to the working memory. And so you've got to see a little bit of what we do every day, but hopefully, got to maybe learn something as well.
I certainly did.
Well, within a thirty-minute block, there are, you know, any, some days, there may be three activities, or as many as four or five. So, you know, five, ten-minute activities that are quick. So today, you get to do one of the activities.
Here, you may run out.
Tile boards with magnetic letters, so you can take out your magnet board.
I'll ask you a question. How does this way of teaching differ than, say, the way they did it thirty or forty years ago?
Well, it's really, I mean, it's really a multi-sensory approach.
I'm just, go ahead.
It really is a multi-sensory approach, and for every skill that the students are taught, they're taught a strategy, and that strategy becomes ingrained in them, starting from kindergarten, moves to kindergarten to first, to second grade.
And they, they use that strategy when they come up?
They use, the strategies stay consistent throughout the program, it's just that the degree of, I'll say, difficulty, you know, new ideas, concepts are being taught. So it's always, it's that spiraling curriculum, too.
So they can fall back on that fundamental strategy whenever they...
Exactly.
Exactly.
And I guess I would, then I would, the question that I actually was gonna ask was, how does this differ from the way we taught this prior to Fundations?
Well, prior to Fundations, we didn't really have, we had sort of pieces of different programs that we used, but we didn't have a, a set program that everybody could follow.
So there wasn't one comprehensive thing that...
Teachers were sort of pulling what was, and that's another thing that, you know, when we piloted at the Little School, we, we just were craving some systematic, you know, some...
Well, because with...
That's important.
And as a reading specialist, I was craving a very...
Without it being systematic...
Structured, explicit, you know.
You risk, you risk it, even if we have, even if we claim to have the same curriculum at each school.
Right.
The curriculum's going to depend on the teacher who's teaching that subject.
So this is implemented at all three elementary schools.
All three elementary schools.
Doing it the same way.
That's great.
Same language.
One of the great things is too, is that because it is so structured and so systematic, you can walk in on day four of, you know, the unit two, week two, and every teacher's doing the same thing. If you go into kindergarten, if you go into first grade, if you go into second grade, it is obviously varied for the different grade levels. But it is amazing to, I've done a walkthrough where I've walked into a kindergarten class and seen them working with the tile, or maybe not the tile boards, but their tile boards on the whiteboard. And then you go into first grade and they're doing the same thing, but it just stepped up a little bit. And then you go into a second grade classroom and they're doing the exact same thing, but it's with added components.
When Foundations adopted by a lot of schools in Massachusetts?
Yes.
Increasingly.
Increasingly.
Not only in Massachusetts, but across the country. I mean, it was amazing to me when I went out to the training in Oxford in July, I met people from almost every state, you know. And they're sending their teachers there for four and five days at a time. They're flying them there and providing housing for them and giving them training. So it's, it really is, it's research-based. It's a research-based program.
A lot of proven.
Are you finding that there's a difference in the results? Because I've been very impressed with what I've seen in your teaching program. Youngest one I've got is three, third grade.
Well, it's not three.
It says great, 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 grand.
I had it first grade.
Well, I want you to think.
Close to the three-year-old.
Checking whether we're improving over what I thought was pretty good. So.
We've had really big, when we piloted at the little school in first grade and the second year, the second grade teachers had this crop of children that had had, you know, had it all year. And they were blown away. At the beginning of the year, they give just a words their way spelling assessment with just some, you know, diagrams and long vowels. And 98% of each of the classes got all of the words. It was all things that we were taught and they knew. There's been a big difference.
Is there a transition? So when, after grade three, is there a four, five program? Is there a middle school program or it just stops there?
The Foundations program actually stops at grade three.
But there's no.
And then there's, the Wilson Language Corporation has developed another program called Just Words. And that's for grades four and five. For children that still might need that word structure instruction. But that's something that's.
These are foundational skills really in the early grades, getting kids ready for what they need for reading. And just quickly on the historical question, it might be more similar to 40, 50 years ago. We did have some different patterns of whether this was taught explicitly or not. And I think in the years when it was absent, I was younger. I know I didn't have this when I was younger. I definitely heard from a lot of teachers and as I've been, it really was important to come back. It's a key, essential piece of the common core that an explicit program for teaching phonemic awareness and phonics skills is present. So we've really embodied that here with this program. So it's a practice that started with adult learners and with special education. And it's now, why not share this with everyone? These are strategies that work with all students. So let's develop a program that's going to work for everyone the same way it worked for our special education students. So it's really been great. I'll let you lead the lesson.
I'm just going to say, I did teach 30 years ago. And I was teaching, what's great about the Wilson Foundations program is that everything is interconnected. It's interrelated. I taught phonics in isolation. I taught spelling in isolation. I taught writing in isolation. What the Wilson Foundations program has done is it's pulled it all together. So students make the connections between what they're learning and what they're applying to the other subjects that they're learning. If we don't help students make connections, they're not going to generalize to social studies, science, and math. So this program helps students see the connections so that as they move through the grades, they apply what they learn. And they're, they're better. They're automatic at these skills. So that's the difference between what we used to do and what we do now.
So you'll notice on your board, you have several different colors.
Is this going to be hard?
I'm going to do it up here as well.
I was going to copy this.
We're doing some syllable division and naming change. So you'll notice the pink, the pink tiles are the vowels. The yellow are the consonants. You see the diagrams underneath the alphabet. And they are arranged in a specific order because W H, as you see, is the first one. W H only comes at the beginning of a word. So it's first. C K only comes at the end of a word. So it's at the end of the diograph row. And alphabetical in between. And then the green tiles are what Wilson calls glued sounds or welded sounds. They're, when you tap them, you tap them with one tap. So they blend together as one sound. You know, all.
Oh, okay.
All. Ball. And then you'll notice there's blank tiles as well. Sometimes an activity will be to spell words and tap them with blank tiles. So that their, children are, again, making that connection multisensory. Oh, it's a consonant. It's a vowel. A consonant. I hear a glued sound. So we do that activity a lot. And then you'll also notice there is a darker yellow tile. And that is a suffix tile. So later in first grade and in second grade, we've been doing a lot of work with suffixes. They're taught to isolate the base word when they hear a word with a suffix and spell or tap the base word and then add the suffix on. So when we're doing words with suffixes on the magnet board, they just use that blank tile and it stands for N or ED or whatever. The great thing too about these boards is that they grow with the student. So in first grade, they'll just have the alphabet. And then as we go ahead and progress with the lessons, we'll start adding different tiles to it. So this is what a board looks like towards the mid to end of second grade.
Second grade? Two best years of my life.
So we can tap and build some words.
Okay.
So when you tap a word, you're going to tap.
Oh, you tap it.
Finger to your thumb for each sound that you hear in the word.
Okay.
So for example, we'll go with diagrams. Enlightening.
I thought we were doing.
You have a word like shop. So you repeat the word.
Shop.
And then we'll tap it.
Sh. O. Shop.
I hear three sounds. So see if you can spell the word shop.
Shop.
Or tiles.
Oh, God. Oh, wait. Use the digra. Use the digra. Oh, yeah. No, I know.
Oh, I'm not, I, everything's mixed up. Everything's mixed up now.
Michael's advanced.
Everything's mixed up.
And he's a math guy too.
I know. Is that you that's screwing it up?
And he's the English guy.
Just keep facing this way, all right? Look, I got it all messed up.
I thought he was there with the iPad.
Well, you screwed it up to start with.
I know, but I know. But you were copying me.
I was copying you. That's why I got it wrong.
I'm all set. Thank you. Shop? How do you spell it?
S H O P.
Okay, great. Now we're going to spell the word away. So together, we're going to spell the word again as we put the tiles away. So shop. You have to put the tiles in the word. S A.
H.
O.
P.
So now we've spoken and spelled the word.
That's interesting.
Oh, jeez, my P, I thought it was a D.
It's a bonus letter.
Bonus letter.
Let's do the word spell.
Spell.
Tap it. S.
O. Spell.
No, we got to use. I'm watching her.
Wait a minute. That was four sounds.
Do it again.
S. P.
F. O. Spell.
There should only be four.
She's using all the letters.
You will notice that underneath the diagrams, there are.
Oh, yeah. I got you. I got you.
Those are the bonus.
I got to use your bonus letters.
Reinforce it, you will also notice that the F, the L, and the S are at the end of your alphabet rows as well to reinforce. It's those three letters.
Do it. Did you get it right?
I don't know.
Yes, you did.
I did. All right.
That's why the letters are laid out in the arts.
Can you use your bonus letters more than once?
Do the kids have trouble putting the letters back?
Yeah.
Because I think that's even harder than pulling them out.
Pulling them out?
Yeah.
I don't know. They become so automatic.
Really?
Mine are all screwed up. I don't know what I did.
There were no tiles on the letter board initially in kindergarten. So as they're taught each letter, the letter goes on the tile board. So initially, they may only have one letter or two letters. But they're also taught how to put the alphabet into quadrants. And there's a model on.
That's fine.
And actually, in the kindergarten and first grade.
It's more like a keyboard.
That's right.
But this is really a pretty useful thing. When you get all these different, you could have some fun making different words.
Yeah, that's great.
So let's spell it away.
Spell it away.
S. S.
P. E. L. L.
Okay, wait. Why do I have an extra S?
Bonus. A glued sound.
Are you ready for two syllables or do you want to go with the glued sound? But let's.
Two syllables?
Your green tiles. Yep. So the word is thing. Let's tap thing. Watch what happens.
I think I got it. I think I got it. I got it.
Oh, it's over here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I got it slow.
Notice they need help over on that side. I'm a writer too. I'm a writer and I can't do this.
Great. So let's spell it away.
I'm almost ready to go to the.
I know. We'd be separated and said.
I'm not, I, I'm not even copying them anymore. He's way too slow. He's way too slow.
Now, I think you had a little transparency in your, that looks like this.
Really?
In your bag.
Oh, in the bag.
Oh, in the back.
You're going to put that on your board.
Oh, God.
Oh, this is the multi-syllable thing.
That helps us.
Hey, I don't have one.
Does it stick to your thing?
Supposed to put it silent?
No.
We have a lot of them missing.
I don't have one. Really?
Maybe it fell out. We're all set on this side. We're good. Whenever you're, whenever you're ready.
I think we're going back to the first grade now. I really don't.
We're going to do a two-syllable word this time.
Two syllables?
Jerry just closed the book.
And you're going to use your frames to tap the two syllables. So the word is splendid. So tap in the frame for the first syllable.
Splend.
I haven't got one.
Did. Splend.
Did. So you're going to go ahead and tap each syllable as needed. So splen.
Splend.
S.
Splend.
N.
M.
Splend. So go ahead and try to.
We have to spell that first. Yep. One syllable at a time.
So it's a multi-syllable word. They're isolating each syllable and spelling it that way. And then you tap the second syllable, did. You know what? You don't have another D. So you do have another D. So just just blank for the second D.
You don't have another D?
Well, these things come up.
When you don't.
I ran out of room.
That's when you usually blank a syllable type. This one?
Yeah. So you can just use the yellow.
What happens when the tiles don't fit on the box?
That's what happened. I ran out of room.
Yeah. But this is kind of a longer word. I wanted to try to.
This might be third grade.
It's a sign of creativity outside the box.
I only use one D. So you got to use. Make sure you use a consonant blank. Consonant blank. Oh, you don't have blanks.
There you go. We read right to left. Left to right.
No, I read anyway. So. S. S. P. L. Oh, we got to put these back. N. D. I. C. D.
Oh, I forgot. I put these in.
Blank.
All right.
We'll do one more with the suffix. That was.
Can I go to the boys' room?
No, we want to answer the question. Who can answer the question? What is the suffix? An S or an ED? Thanks to what you said.
No, a suffix is a phrase that's added to the end of a word to do something.
I graduated from suffix law school.
Suffix is a word ending such as S, E S, E D, I N G, L Y. A B S S. A B L E. N D N T.
Bendable.
Add it to a base word.
Add it to a base word.
Add to the base word, right.
So they're taught to, if you say a word like invented, they repeat back the base word first, which is invent. And they spell that.
Yeah.
And then they, with the suffix on, there's no tapping of the suffix because then, you know, you get things like kicks. You know, they'll spell it with an X if they're trying to tap out it. It's. So they spell the base word and then they add the suffix. So go ahead and try invented. Two syllables, tear the suffix.
So. In. In. Invent.
Exactly.
In. In. This one. Exercise.
How many Ns do we have?
We have to use a, you'll have to use a blank. I don't have an N either.
For the ED.
A blank tile. And then what's the ED? Oh, this thing's the ED, right?
What are you going to do, ED now?
Yeah. It's the suffix.
Oh, that's right. That's the suffix.
That's what I just college. Suffix.
Blank, yellow.
Two syllables, don't they? Okay.
Oh, Michael's advanced. He did two syllables.
Well, that's what they said.
Oh, okay.
Two syllables. And then you spell it going back, right? Oh, I get a little bit of the beginning. So the I. 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 N.
That's your suffix.
I thought you just put ED back.
No, Matt, they don't want to spell it. E.
D.
Where's the I go?
After the H.
This has been the best meeting ever.
Ever.
You got to eat?
Yes.
You got to go to school?
How do you spell ever?
Ever. E.V.A.
The students are taught syllable types. So they're taught, like, invented, that N is a closed syllable, and they're taught Y is a closed syllable, and invented is a closed syllable. And they know why, so we start off with closed syllables, and then we talk vowel consonant E syllables. And in second grade, it's very challenging because they're taught seven syllable types in the English language. And they're also taught how to mark up the words. Teaching them how to mark up the words also teaches them how to go and syllabicate the word. If they come to the word when they're reading, they're given rules for understanding how syllables are formed. So hopefully, they're going to apply that when they get to a word that they can't read. And they'll be able to look at the word and understand how to break that apart. So see, that's how it all ties it together. Colony, stone.
This is good.
They do this in an adult ed class.
It is amazing, I mean, today in second grade, we did words that were multi-syllable words that had closed syllables and vowel consonant E syllables. And they're, you know, splitting words.
And they talk how to mark the words up.
They know how to mark the words.
How sophisticated.
One of the goals, though, is, so you asked us, what's the definition of a suffix or a prefix? None of us can probably repeat back that definition, but I think we all know what a suffix or a prefix is. So that's, I mean, the goal of this isn't, so in fifty years, I can tell you what the definition of a suffix is, but if you say...
You know how to use it.
You know how to use it, right.
And if you see a word that you don't know, you know how to group the letters.
Exactly. It's how to group the letters and how to kind of sound it out.
But for children, having that knowledge of knowing what it was, like you asked about when I was growing up teaching, they didn't teach us why, or they didn't teach us what a syllable says. They just said, you put an S on the end of that word.
Right, you put an S on the end of that word.
They didn't teach you why or how, and that's how we learned it. And now, where you saw the kids with that word talk, where they're talking back and saying what a diagram is, they're naming what bonus letters is, what bonus letters are, so that they have that understanding. Because if you have the knowledge of it, then you can apply it.
It is rule-based. I remember when I was going to school, I learned I before E except after C. So that, those were the kinds of rules that we remembered. We had the vowel song, would you like to sing it?
A, E, I, O, U are the vowels, U are the vowels.
All right, that's enough.
And then, of course, we had the three students, B.A.B., B.A.B. Which is probably more helpful than the vowel song. Yeah, exactly. For Lisa, dope. Anyway.
Oh, we digress.
It's spelling, right?
Yes. Yeah, so this is, um...
Anything to replace kids spelling.
...the spelling list, because this is a spelling program. So they are learning the rules of spelling.
Not taking spelling words home and memorizing them necessarily.
At the same time, I'm kind of glad that it's replaced kids spelling because I see kids spelling showing up all over the place. But I, one thing about kids spelling was that it allowed fluency that the kids could write even though they didn't get the spelling right. And that taught them to write fluently, easy, easy writing. And hopefully, we won't destroy that concept either.
They're still encouraged to do that, but not to hold them accountable to the instruction that they've had. The teacher is, we've now been trained that if, for instance, someone writes in their journal, and it's a second grader, and the teacher goes to review it, any concept that's been taught through foundations, the teachers encourage to circle that word and make that child accountable. Like, you have been taught this, and there are tools that you can use. You can look in, or is it in second grade, you have the, um, stem part, the archery part? But also to apply their strategies that they've been taught, so that by their health, accountable for this instruction.
How do you get the parents more integrated into the educational process? I mean, well, yeah, I think this program or any program, I think this was an outstanding demonstration, honestly. And I don't think the parents get an idea of what you're teaching them other than homework packets, which I think does a big disservice to all of that work that goes throughout the day. So how would you, what's the best way? Maybe the answer is, you're not supposed to get the parents, the kids are supposed to figure this out on their own by the time they get home, and then they're, you know, they're outstanding readers. But for my part, I think...
I can't speak for the schools, but I know at Wood School, we have parent information, like in September, every classroom teacher that's teaching foundations, you know, presents, has been presenting foundations. It's a big part of their presentation, because it is in the program. And then you do have the support packs. You also, you know, parent conferences, you know, the composition books for each year, so...
But how about taking it even a step further in offering support materials you're using in the classroom at home? For example, maybe setting up a shop of some sort online that can bring those magnets at home so kids can practice that, you know? Something like that, you know, for an idea.
Yeah, it is something to consider. They do have, in the beginning, you know, in first grade, they have a beginning where they have those tiles, and they're Xerox copies. And so they have them in...
Right, right.
They don't necessarily have them as magnet tiles.
Right.
But they do have them. We give our reading specialists one ahead and made up a packet for kindergarten and first grade parents. And we give it out to the beginning of the year. But it wouldn't be bad to have parents come in in a more in-depth curriculum.
Yeah, I mean, I think that initial night is really hurried, and you're talking really quick, we're learning the calendar, we're learning weather and all that. It doesn't do the whole process a service. Also, it'd be nice to see like a syllabus for the parents throughout the year, not just for first through, but throughout all the grades, you know? So parents know that, hey, at this point in November, we're learning this process. You know, some parents, when they're doing homework...
High school here will get a syllabus.
They should, yeah, they definitely get a syllabus.
Yeah, in the parent letter, it outlines what you're doing. Even if they're anywhere from one week to previous...
Right.
I, myself, I have a website that I update every Friday night and, or every Sunday night. And I explicitly say, we're working on long, you know, vowel consonant E, and I will, you know, use the language, plus they have the pack, so...
Sure. No, that's good. Then I know, you know, more information is better than less information.
And a lot of parents have worked talk this way, and so I'll have parents...
Exactly.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, it's, I should not know that, but they don't know that.
Why are they starring in the right S?
No, I think that is important, that homeschool connection to keep everybody on the same page.
Good, great.
Thank you very much.
It's a good demonstration of the hands-on piece as well. I think, great job, folks.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't lie. Couple of us fooled around more than we did our work.
As long as we don't have to take the MCAS.
But I think you see the hands-on piece, the humor there, the engagement, the multimodal. I mean, you're engaging this, and it goes into your memory.
Yes.
Thank you so much, folks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Did a great job.
Food for the stomach, food for the mind. I'm ready to take a nap. It's fun now. Because they're doing incredible things. I wish my wife was here to see this. Very good. She's an English teacher, like, in a high school.
High school.
But we have a second grader, so she understands what's going on. Can, so we want to get that light, that light...
Patrick, can you turn the light on?
Patrick, thanks, Patrick. Okay, now, we can return back to the agenda under Continued Business, and our first item is MSBA SSBC update. Superintendent?
Sure. Just a couple of points. The last secondary school building committee meeting took place on Tuesday, November 20th, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. And at that particular meeting, we continue to work with the architects, the construction manager at risk, and the OPM to reconcile project cost estimates leading to value engineering strategies that will help us align the project budget. A lengthy discussion at that meeting focused on current project cost estimates and the value engineering process to this point. As you saw in the transcript, last Thursday, there was a long article about some of the work that's being done by the secondary school building committee to close a budget gap between the, um, the value, the estimates of the project and what has been budgeted for the project. I know, Mr. Webster, you want to make a few remarks about the project?
Yeah, I just, there's been a story in the transcript, a story on the North Reading Patch, North Reading Reading Patch. There's been SSBC meetings, there's been people out in the community speaking, and I just wanted to kind of lay out exactly where we are, put all the facts out there, and then if any of the other committee members want to comment. I just wanted to explain the process. So back on March 24th, this town approved at a special election a $107.7 million project. Seven months later, we're here where we are today. The first thing I want to do is to break down that project. While the project was $107.7 million, the construction budget was actually a little more than $86 million. So you're gonna hear that $86 million number a lot. The $21 million reflects what are called soft costs. That would be the OPM, the construction manager at risk, and the architect. Are the, correct?
That's correct, and contingencies.
And contingencies built in, in case we have any overages. Since July, and one other thing I wanted to mention was, that $107 million figure, $107.7 million figure, was arrived at by two estimates that we received from our project manager estimator and our architect estimator. So those, that was the number that they came to and agreed to. Now, one thing with the MSBA process, and this is true of a lot of building projects, public building projects, that number was arrived at basically on specs, on schematics. As Mr. Venezia, we were talking earlier, basically, 10% of all of the plans, the design and construction, were completed at that time. So you're estimating a $100 million-plus project on 10% of the plans. We have no control over that. That's what the, that's what the Mass School Building Authority process requires. One other thing to note is, in, on many projects, you'll see a plus or minus 5% at the end of the project from that, whatever your initial estimate was. So we had those estimates. About, I think it was about in July, maybe, it started looking like as, as the design plans became, got closer to completion, it was clear that there were some items that were gonna cost a little more than we had expected. So what the school building committee, the architect, the OPM, and the construction manager at risk have been doing since July, I believe, is looking at items mainly what materials are going to make up this building and making decisions on things like floors, floor tiles, walls, ceilings, windows, et cetera, et cetera, with a goal of making sure this project comes in on budget. Through that process, the SSBC, working with the professionals that we've hired to advise us, cut approximately $5.5 million, Jerry Cliff? More than five, well, $5.5 million. At that point, it looked like we were getting close to what the construction budget was going to be, and we had maybe a million or two left to cut, but we were getting close. Couple of weeks ago, maybe about a month ago, the construction documents were now at 60%. Again, we had, there was an SSBC meeting, and at that time, we were told that there was now still a $4.5 million gap to be filled. So we've already, we've already reduced costs by $5.5 million through the materials, basically the materials we're selecting to put into this project. And now we're told we have to cut another $4.5 million. And we're also told that when the construction documents, design documents are 100% complete, there's likely going to be additional costs. We don't know what those are. You know, we're guessing anywhere from $1 to $2 million. We haven't been given a number on that at all. But I think it's safe to say that in the end, we're probably looking at another $6 million total. Four and a half, and maybe another million and a half, could be a little more than that, that we're gonna have to cut out of this project. So you see the process, and it makes sense. The more the design comes into view, the more clear you are on what the project consists of, and the more accurate your cost estimates are. So that's where we are now. We still have that $86-plus million dollar construction budget. We're still looking to cut between another $4.5 and $6 million. And we're at a point where it's getting difficult to make those cuts. The SSBC will be meeting tomorrow night, and I believe the entire meeting will be spent looking at ways to get down to that $86 million budget. I want to make two things really clear here. The educational program hasn't changed, one iota. The floor plans of the schools have not changed, and the square footage of the schools have not changed. However, some of the things we're looking at tomorrow night, while it won't impact the educational program or the square footage, they could have significant impact on the project as a whole. So that's essentially where we are. I wanted, I just wanted the community to be 100% clear on the status. You know, we as a school committee, working with the SSBC, working with the selectmen, working with the finance committee, and working with our professional advisors, the goal is to continue to work to bring this project in under budget. I just want to, and the other, one other thing I want to make clear is all of the professionals working with us. We have Doran Whittier, the architect, we have PMA as the project manager, and the construction manager at risk is Gilbain.
And the MSBA.
And the MSBA. But all of those contractors, or the architect, the project manager, and the contractor, the construction manager at risk, are all given to us on approved lists by the MSBA. So we get a list from the MSBA. I think we, on all of those things, we probably culled it down to three or four, or two or three. Then we meet with the MSBA, and then you guys are part of the process. I believe then the MSBA has to vote to approve who we select, correct?
But we, we select it from the best of those that we could get.
Right, so...
The MSBA does have to approve them.
Right.
And every one of our professionals, the Doran Whittier, PMA, and Gilbain, are all very experienced and have long resumes in building schools, Massachusetts, so...
So that's where we are. I want, as I said, I wanted everybody to be 100% clear on where the project stands. It continues to move forward in terms of the planning and design and construction documents. Some bids have gone out. I think a few of the early bid packages are starting to trickle in, and we'll continue to keep you updated. I don't know if anybody else wanted to add anything at this time?
It's a good summary, Mr. Chairman. I think that's pretty much where we're at.
Cliff, anything?
No, I think one of the, one of the things that's important to note is that we have these early packages which have been, have been bid. And it's for site work and for steel.
Concrete.
Concrete.
Concrete, right.
And those are, are gonna need to be awarded very soon because those will, if, if we do not award them, we'll have to go back out for another bid. And to do that is gonna cost us a lot more money.
What do you want, have a...
Never been a rebid on anything ever.
Do you have a certain amount of time after the bid comes in that a bidder has to be chosen?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's, it's important from the standpoint of keeping the project going, and it's also important from the standpoint of the overall cost to keep the project moving and to award those contracts and keep moving. And they're a very significant part of the, of the program. Something in the order of, what, $20 million? That's a pretty significant chunk of the, of the effort.
Actually, they...
One of those packages happens to be in the area of the site work, and that is an area where the cost of the project was affected by conditions on the ground, which no one could predict ahead of time.
There really are four to five reasons, and I just did want to go with these two, and then we can move on, unless anybody has any questions or comments, why we're, we're looking at a budget that's still out of whack. One, as Cliff just mentioned, is the site work. Two is, we're gonna need some additional steel. Three is, there was, the original estimate for the HVAC system was too low. Four is, the construction market is heating up, and bids are coming in a little more aggressively, a little higher, I should say. And finally, you know, the original estimate that we got clearly was too low for this project. And as I said, we're, you know, we're, we're dependent on the outside professionals who are guiding us. So that's why we're all working together now to, to bring this thing in on budget. Anything else, Kathy?
No, thank you.
Okay, next, we have policy manual review, second reading. Cliff?
This is the same, same package of policies that we came up with last, last meeting. The section G, which involved, do we need to go through these one at a time, I guess?
We voted them one at a time at the last meeting.
Right.
I don't think we have to read them, but I think you probably have to vote on them one at a time.
The first one is what, G-A-A-A?
G-A-A-A.
Sound it out.
And that's equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity. Is there any, does anybody have a comment on that, or...
I'd move to approve it, second reading.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion by Jerry, seconded by Cliff for approval, second reading of the revised equal employment opportunity policy, policy G-A-A-A. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
The second policy that we approved last meeting up for a second reading is policy G-A-J, Ethics Regulations on Gift Giving and Acceptance.
Have a motion to accept, is this a revise or is this a new?
This is a revised.
Revised, right?
Revised.
A motion to accept the revised Ethics Regulations on Gift Giving and Acceptance, policy G-A-J.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
The third policy that we had was policy G-A-M, Corey Requirements. And this is significantly revisioned.
Right. Well, it has a lot more detail in it than our previous policy.
Right, a lot more detail.
Have a motion to accept the revised Corey Requirements policy, G-A-M.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
The next one is policy G-B, Professional Personnel Section. And...
I think we just changed some of the titles of this one, correct?
Yeah, a couple of changes in the titles, I think, in this.
Okay. Have a motion to approve revised policy G-B, Professional Personnel Section.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Cliff. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
The next one is policy G-B-D, Professional Staff Hiring.
Revised, correct?
This is revised.
Okay. Okay. Have a motion to accept, second reading, policy GBD, Professional Staff Hiring.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Jerry, second by Cliff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Next one is policy GBI, Professional Growth and Evaluation Plan for Teachers.
I believe this is changed to reflect the new teacher evaluation system.
Yes, and on this policy, what had been presented to you was amended by the committee. I believe Mrs. Eriaketti asked that we remove a phrase called "a structure"
Right.
...can be established," and it was changed, I mean, to remove recognizing that teaching is an extremely complex process.
Right.
And begin the sentence with "a structure should be established."
Yeah.
And that was the only change.
Okay. Have a motion to approve, second reading, policy GBI, Professional Growth and Evaluation Plan for Teachers.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Jerry, second by Cliff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Next one is policy GBL, Professional Status. A lot of revisions.
Did we change a date in here, or?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Have a motion to approve, second reading, policy GBL, Professional Status.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Jerry, second by Cliff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Next is policy GBQ, Retirement.
Okay, this we just changed, I think, the percentage to reflect the new state guidelines.
Do we actually need a policy on this? The law doesn't control on this, or? I'm just curious.
It was in the policy manual, so we just updated it.
Yeah.
So, for motion to approve, second reading, policy GBQ, Retirement.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Jerry, second by Cliff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Okay, next is policy GBRF, Travel Expenses in State.
This was also amended at the last meeting by the school committee. There was a request after Director of Finance and Operations to add the phrase "expenses submitted by the Director of Finance and Operations are approved by the superintendent."
Right.
That was the only change.
Okay. Motion to approve, second reading, policy GBRF, Travel Expenses in State.
So moved.
Motion by Cliff.
I'll second.
Second by Jerry. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Just seeing if you were waiting. The next is policy GBRGB, Tutoring for Pay.
Okay, and this one, I think, was to reflect that North Reading School teachers' employees cannot tutor on-site-
For money.
...for, for, for, for money. As far as a personal business goes, their personal business.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, look for motion to approve policy GBRGB, tutoring, second reading, Tutoring for Pay.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
The next policy is GBRHB, Administrative Conferences and Visitations.
What do we change here?
We took out the last sentence that stated requests for administrative leave will be reviewed by the school committee before approval.
Because that's part of ed reform, right?
Under ed reform.
Okay. So if I could have a motion to approve, second reading, policy GBRHB, Administrative Conferences and Visitations.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
The next policy is CAG, Health and Life Insurance Withholding.
Oh, and this we changed, I think, from their pay to weekly for their pay.
From monthly to weekly, correct.
Okay, so a motion to approve policy, second reading, policy GCG, Health and Life Insurance Withholding.
So moved.
A second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Next policy is GCEA, Uniforms.
Right, and I believe this was changed to reflect whatever each contract says of the employee, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so motion to approve, second reading, policy GCEA, Uniforms.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Policy is GCI, Evaluation.
Okay. What was the change here?
The second sentence, instead of saying 60 days prior to the end of the fiscal year, we substituted in accordance with the employee group's contract agreement.
All right, so can I have a motion to second, approve, second reading, policy GCI, Evaluation?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
And the last under G is GDEC, Non-Certified Staff Recruiting.
Right, and this one was changed to have the direct supervisors-
Be involved.
...review invoices, review resumes and interviews, et cetera, before getting to the superintendent.
Correct.
So can I have a motion to approve, second reading, revised policy GDC, Non-Certified Staff Recruiting?
So moved.
And a second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, did we skip over GAJ there, the Ethics Regulations?
No, we did that one.
We did it?
Yeah.
Okay. And how about-
Did he make the motion on that?
The grievance complaint procedure, we did that as well?
Yes, yes. Okay, so next we have a few other policies.
That didn't change.
That didn't change.
That has the R after it, that didn't change, but we attached it anyway.
Now, let's see.
It's ABBA, right?
Ah, yes. The next one we have is policy ABBA, Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity.
Okay, and this is a revision. What did we change? Did we just add it a lot more here, or what was the-
Significant revision. We took out the first paragraph and in, and started with public schools.
That's right.
And then the la, the paragraph that starts with North Reading Public Schools will require all persons.
Mm-hmm.
That was what was already in the policy.
And again, these are most, a lot of these changes, revisions, and new policies are mainly to conform with state and federal regulations, and also the recommendations of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, correct?
Exactly.
Correct.
Correct. And this ABBA has also an ABBA-dash-E, a dash-R associated with it.
Okay. So we, I think we can approve-
Those are regulations that go along.
So we just need to approve the ABBA, though, right?
Correct.
All right, I have a motion to approve, second reading, policy ABBA, Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Next one we have is policy ABBB, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex.
Okay, again, revised to conform with federal and state revisions and requirements. Motion to approve, second reading, policy ABBB, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Next one we have is section BCBK, Executive Sessions.
Right, and this is much lengthier than the previous policy, goes into detail on how, why you can have an executive session, what you can discuss in executive sessions, et cetera.
This is in Executive Sessions Cookbook.
Right, right. So can I have a motion to approve, second reading, revised policy BCBK, Executive Sessions?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Two more, folks.
Section EBBG, Emergency Plans.
This is a new, new, new policy, right?
Yes. This is a new policy in compliance with the law.
Okay. Have a motion to approve, a new, second reading, new policy EBBG, Emergency Plans.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And finally?
Section JGC, Student Health Services and Requirements.
And again, this has been updated to reflect new federal and state regulations and requirements. Correct?
Yes.
All right, so can I have a motion to approve revised policy for a second reading, JGC, Student Health Services and Requirements?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, Policy Subcommittee.
If I may add, these policies are all on our website, and I encourage all parents to go out and just browse through the policies.
I think, I think it makes sense, if you have a chance, to peruse the policies that govern, govern your school district.
I agree.
I suggest that everybody memorize.
Memorize them, yeah. Good idea.
Good Sunday reading.
Okay, so we've heard, we've already gone over the request for the ski trip, school lunches, what's new, nutrition, okay. Next, I believe, is, are we at capital? Capital planning, capital projects?
Yes, we are.
Carl?
Yes, thank you. As context, committee would recall that the process by which the school department presents large capital requests for consideration, ultimately for town meeting, has changed. And we're now engaged in that, the second step of that process, the first step being the, the development of the proposals in, at the administrative level. And at this stage, along with superintendent, we are presenting to you the five capital requests that have been submitted and reviewed by senior staff of the school department. From after the school committee reviews them, and either prioritizes them, or endorses them, or doesn't, the superintendent will submit these requests to the capital request committee. The committee, of course, has been newly established, and the school department is represented by Karen Eriaketti and myself. That committee, after the new year, will review all of the capital requests that are submitted on a townwide basis, and recommend to the selectmen, who will then decide which will ultimately be considered by town meeting in June. So these are FY14 projects, and those that are ultimately agreed upon at the town meeting, town meeting, will be implemented effective July 1.
Carl, the one thing I'll note is, the town, over the last several years, had fallen into the habit of reviewing and approving capital expenses at the October town meeting, whereas previously, for many years, October town meeting was about zoning and road acceptances and variances, et cetera. And I think the goal here is to try to have all, or as many of the financial items as possible voted on in June, at the June town meeting, and hopefully keep as few as possible at, at the October town meeting.
Excellent point. And for that reason, since we've already had an October town meeting that has already voted out some capital projects, this, the pickings will be slim this June for that reason. And then we'll get back into a better calendar, and June will be hopefully better. But, so, in your packet, there are five capital requests that we'd like to review with you. And they're noted at the top as priority. Having said that, I, I think that priority one and two are tied, but we are listing presently the utility rack truck as the primary priority of the school department as we move forward. The utility rack truck is, is really the key vehicle for the school department. It handles our snow plowing, it handles the movement of goods and materials across and between the schools, it handles, it has a vacuum attachment on it, it does all the leaf pickup, it hauls the playground mulch that gets dumped at the five playgrounds, it's a dump truck, it's a rack truck, with also, it has a hydraulic lift on it. The present truck will be 10 years old this year, has 80,000 hard miles on it, and it is becoming a repair problem. Yeah, it's presently, the leaf spring broke on it this, early this fall, the hydraulic fluid is leaking on and on, so we're at a point where we're having difficulty with that vehicle. So for that reason, we are recommending it as our number one priority. These trucks are expensive, and the price tag for such a truck is $61,000. Yes?
I have a question. Excuse my ignorance, but is there any way we can get the town involved in doing some of that work, or loaning us a truck, or?
You know, yes, I think we work pretty closely with the town. On all snow removal projects, for example, we don't have the manpower or the truck power to do snow removal on the bigger storm. So for that reason, for example, the high school lot is always one of the bigger challenges, and the middle school lot will now become a big challenge. So the town's commercial vehicles and big dump trucks help us there. During the summer, there's a lot of interdepartmental work that goes on. But to your direct question, in my judgment, the school does need its, I don't want to call it personal vehicle, because I don't mean it to sound as though we don't share it, but this truck is used eight hours a day, every day. And while we do share, I think the school department does need at its disposal, its own vehicle.
This is the only truck of this type that we have, correct?
Yes, there's a pickup truck as well.
Right, right.
But this is the only major truck that can do the, the major work that we need. It, it hauls the furniture from one place to another, it picks up goods and materials that, it, there are days, there are many times where we share vehicles with the town, you know, we share the tractors, we share the lawn mowing equipment, we share pickup trucks, but we're dependent on this truck.
Okay.
Thank you. The second priority, which, as I noted, is really tied for first, and it is an initiative that has been submitted and planned and developed by Patrick Daly, the Director of Economic Services. And this second priority is, involves with technology, and it would provide an additional five iPad carts for the district, one for each school. The iPad initiative that was implemented a year and a half ago has been a tremendous success. We have students engaged, we have teachers vying, if you will, for an opportunity to use iPads in their classrooms. And this is where we're putting our emphasis in professional development and in pedagogy. And we have a long description here that describes some of the things that we would like to do. But at the end of the day, this proposal calls for the acquisition of one additional iPad cart for each of the five buildings. Once again, it's an expensive item. The total cost at this point is $122,000, and it represents our first and/or first and second priority.
So we're talking, we, we have 150 iPads today on five carts, we're looking, adding five more carts for another 150. Does this replace what we used to call our annual technology budget request, or is this separate from that?
You know, I'm not sure we, we still have an annual technology request as we did years past. Years past, every three years, we went to the town and asked for, for funds that were, the town borrowed money.
Right.
And I'm not sure that's the approach we're presently really thinking. We're, we are asking for consideration for this, and I, I'm not, you know, we are also in the, by the way, in the process of developing a five-year capital plan, and I think at that point, we will flesh out what our future technology requests are. At this stage, the, the committee's asking us for the FY14 proposal, and I'm, I'm not certain, we're in a three-year rotation at this stage.
That makes, this way makes more sense to me than just automatically going back every three years and saying, give us money for three more years to buy, you know, servers and-
I agree.
PCs. This has a programmatic bent to it, which is the way we should be looking at technology. And I think we've seen several examples of the iPads, and used to be at the elementary schools, the high school, some of the things the kids were doing at the high school, making movies, et cetera. So I think, moving forward, this way of purchasing technology makes sense.
I think, you know, the justification isn't enough, but I think it's good, I mean, you have a lot of justification you haven't mentioned in there. For one thing, we've held off significantly on the iPad initial release due to the fact that we wanted to make sure that we can use these iPads properly in the classroom.
Mm-hmm.
So we have, we have to commend the school department on not just jumping in and buying iPads when all the other schools were buying them for every student. So that's one issue.
That's a very good point, Michael. We, we did hold off, and we, we could have, you know, gone whole hog, but we took the route that said our teachers have to be trained to be effective with these before we spend money on them. I think that's an important justification.
Secondly, the justification is that, you know, the technology's moving more mobile.
Right.
You know, and it, this is less costly technology.
Mm-hmm.
So it costs less to maintain, they last longer, they're more durable, they, the battery life is much better than deploying laptops to the students, or, or desktops, you know, things like that, so. And you're able to do everything on an iPad where you can't do it on a PC, unfortunately, at this point. You can do, you can run any science program that's current on here, any reading or writing programs that are current on here, where our outdated PCs aren't going to be able to handle them at this point.
Right.
Thank you, that's helpful. I'm going to now discuss priority number three. Priority number three involves asbestos abatement at the hood and little schools. You referenced a moment ago, Mel, the history of some of these large capital requests. Every three years, going back at least 10, the school department has implemented an asbestos mitigation program at the hood and/or little schools. And this is a request to continue that process. We have to, I, I want to, at first, stress the fact that we don't feel we have present danger, we don't feel that students or staff are exposed to carcinogens or asbestos, but in our attempts to be proactive and preventive, it's appropriate to, over a period of time, remove asbestos from these buildings, because the ceiling, the floor tiles, in this case, are wearing down. We are in full compliance with the federal requirements for AHERA inspections, and if you look at page two, or actually, page six, the number, the page that follows page five that's not numbered, you'll see a couple pictures. They're not too clear in the black and white version, but on the left side, you'll see a, a section of asbestos tiles that have been removed. And what you see left there is the mastex, but it, you start to see that in remembering that these tiles were installed in the, in the 50s, that we've gotten our money's worth, that we've gotten our money's worth, if you will, and in some cases, we've removed the tiles because they were coming up. On the right side, that picture shows the darker tiles are the original nineteen fifty-five tiles. I believe that picture's taken in the little school. And then you see two other colored tiles to the right, just showing you examples of how we take care of things. As the tiles start to wear or buckle, we put new tile down. So we are proactive, Wayne's Crew is very proactive in the service and maintenance of asbestos tiles, and we respectfully request consideration for a project for FY14 in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, where we would continue our every third year attempt to remove asbestos from the elementary schools.
So Carl, if we, if we didn't do this, is there any percentage likelihood that over the next three years, or over the next year, something's going to come up and they're going to have to have some kind of emergency funding to have tiles removed? I guess, maybe I'm not forming the question the right way, but I think you?
Well, you know, I think that the pictures don't lie.
Right.
You see floor tiles that have, are coming up.
I know.
If you were to see them in, in this, you don't really see much in the middle school, but at the elementary schools, there are sections where there are high-traffic areas, where the tiles are worn down to probably less than fifty cents, fifty percent of the original thickness because of just traffic. The standard treatment for asbestos floor tiles is, as strange as it may seem, is to wax them frequently. We will put five or six coats of acrylic, very technologically advanced waxes over these asbestos tiles as, as the safeguard. That's the accepted approach. But increasingly, the tiles are coming up.
Okay.
And I think it's in our best interest to remove them.
Okay.
Priority number four. Four of the five schools have energy management systems which allow us on an external basis to regulate airflow and regulate temperature. The hood school does not. To give you a good example, when we closed schools for Hurricane Sandy several weeks ago, the way that you turn the heat is programmed to come on through mechanical means. We send one, we sent someone to the hood school that morning to shut the heat down, just because we couldn't do it externally. Airflow, temperature, the, the ability to individually maintain the various zones would lead to what we estimate to be about a ten thousand dollar per year savings. That number, by the way, is not pulled out of the air. The Department of Environmental Protection did an energy audit of the hood school, and the payback period, by their numbers, is ten thou, the annual savings would be ten thousand dollars.
But I'm assuming that'd be ten thousand if we did the full project here and not the partial?
The partial is basically to give us external control over the boiler room.
So, so we could turn the heat on and off from home, or not?
Shut the system down, yeah.
Right, remotely.
Yeah. Whereas the hundred ten allows thermostat controls at each and every unit vent within the building for both air and temperature.
I think on this one, I might, if I supported anything on it, I might support the partial. I just think we have to be careful. But why don't you go through the rest of them?
It can be built upon, so, thank you. Our fifth recommendation has to do with the front walkway at the hood school. Mary Cole, we've discussed this in years past, as you, with the bus drop-off areas coming into the main entrance, that was a concrete floor back at the nineteen ninety-nine renovation. And it appears that it wasn't installed in a fashion that is going to last forever, because we have a lot of freeze and thaw problems there. We enacted a partial solution last year where we jackhammered out the worst section and put down asphalt. So if you, next time you're at the hood school, if you look, you'll see it's not that wide expanse of walkway. About twenty percent of the square footage there has now been replaced by asphalt. You also, if you look at the pictures, you'll see some evidence there. The picture on the last page, on the lower left, shows the door to which I believe is the library there, and you see a crack there in the concrete. And you can see what happens to us in the winter is that that little piece rises up, and we have difficulty opening and closing that door. The picture on the lower right isn't as illustrative as it could be, but you can kind of see the two planes. You know, the area in the foreground is three or four inches lower than the area that heads towards the door.
Does that go up and down depending on the season?
Yes, it does. This past winter, because it was milder than most, we had very little problem there. At some point over the next five years, I think it's probably going to be required.
That certainly looks like a safety hazard with the difference in the two planes there.
We've put cones out now to, to provide cautions and warnings. And this is work we would try to have done by our town DPW. And their estimate of this cost for complete renovation of that area to remove the concrete, put down a foundation, put down gravel, tamp it down properly is twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do you have a total for the five projects, or can you?
I can do it quickly.
I have a calculator if you need it.
Okay.
You do too.
A little over two eighty, Mr. Chairman.
And that's for the full, the two eighty, over two eighty would be for the full system at the hood?
No.
No, that's the partial.
Oh, that's for the partial?
Yes.
Okay. Comments from, questions from members?
How does that compare to last year's capital improvement?
The only thing we did in October was the little school retaining wall. That was the only
What about?
school project.
The year before, I don't think we did anything, did we?
We went one full year with no projects because of our concerns about the building project. Two years ago would be the first iPad initiative.
Yeah.
We've had very minimal requests for a number of years, and I think a big part of it is with an eye toward the secondary school building project.
One and a half years ago, there was a dump truck replacement. I mean, not dump, excuse me, pickup truck replacement.
Right. And then we, I think over the years, we've had vans that transport the students, but at some point, you have to replace those for safety reasons.
I'd say at the very least, we should send them over to the committee and vet them there and see, you know, obviously, we'll have a, two representatives that can prioritize our concerns, and then at least take a look at all five of them.
Does anybody know, when they look at these, will they ask for a representative from the superintendent's office to, okay?
Yes.
I agree. The only question I have is on the hood school one. Should we ask for that full system, or should we just ask for the twenty-five thousand to enable us to control remotely? And then you can build on that, Carl says.
I'm just thinking about the way the system's set up now, that maybe we ask for everything that we feel is, you know, necessary, and then let them break it down, because I think that's what's going to happen now, they're going to start to
Ten, ten years is relatively long payback, but that flexibility may turn out to be a shorter payback.
My guess is they'll probably end up where you're at.
Yeah.
If you can control a certain area, or the amount that you turn it back, and the timing you bring it up, and you know, you can monitor how long it takes a certain area to come up. Anticipation, if it's fully, if it's fully automated, then you can pick out particular areas and single those out to come up sooner if they take longer to warm up, and not warm everything up and everything down together. I think we ought to go for the whole thing on it. It's consistent with what we're doing at the badge.
It's not a lot of money considering, I mean, we're asking, obviously, the middle school and high school, we're leaving kind of out of it right now, but
Right.
for the three other schools, plus the central office and everything, and the, you know, it's not that much to ask for, really.
No. Okay. I don't have a problem with moving forward with all five of them and sending them along to the Capital Projects Committee or Subcommittee. I'm not exactly sure of the name of it, I should know, but I got one more question, but now I can't think. That one, the thing at the hood, we actually had, we've reviewed at least a couple of times, I believe, and we've put it off.
I think the last three years.
Correct, correct. Any other questions or comments on the capital request to be submitted to the Capital Projects Committee? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve and send to the Capital Projects Committee the five requests as presented tonight by Mr. Nelson?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Jerry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous. We have no minutes tonight? Are bills and payroll, are they?
It's all done.
Okay. We have no minutes. Any bids and donations, Kathy?
Not at this time.
Subcommittee updates?
No committees have met, subcommittees have met since the last school committee meeting.
I guess the only thing I report on is we continue to negotiate with the teachers over the new evaluation system for teachers, and that's moving along quite well. And we're hoping early next year to sew it up. So it's very good talks, the teachers are online, in line with this, we're online with it, and it's just a matter of crafting the language that'll be in the contract moving forward. Administrative report, anything?
No, none at this time.
Correspondence?
None.
Nothing. Okay. Next meeting will be December seventeenth at seven o'clock at the high school. And then our first two meetings in January will be January fourteenth and January twenty-eighth. Both here at the middle school.
That's correct.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, unanimous. Good night.